Amanda Green from City of Freeport, I'm trying to see anybody that I need to recognize. I see Boots McCormick. And I need to start. Okay. It's time to start the meeting, if you'll take your seats. Welcome to the July 25th BCC meeting. Please silence your phones at this time and stand for the invocation and the pledge by Reverend Ben Gavins, Tabernacle of Praise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Father. Lord, we come to you this morning, we thank you first of all for life, health, and strength. We thank you for the opportunity to be gathered here with these, your people. And according to your words that you spoke to the prophet Jeremiah 33:3, he said, "To call upon you, and you will answer." And so, Father, this morning, we're calling upon thy name. We're calling on you to guide us, we're calling on you to protect us, we're calling on you to give us wisdom and to use that wisdom for the carrying out of your business. And we thank you for this nation, thank you for the city, and thank you right now for these commissioners of this board. And we ask you, Father, to continue to give us the wisdom that we need, give us the peace that we need, so that we can be as you have ordained for us to walk in. And we thank you for these things, and we ask it by your name and through your spirit. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alex, it's always good to have you here. I believe I saw Boots McCormick. Mr. McCormick, would you stand up for a minute? And anybody else with the City of Freeport, thank you for coming. Congratulations on your new election. Was Amanda Green here? It's hard to see in the back. If you are here, raise, uh, stand up, please. Okay, I believe that's all. If I missed anyone, I apologize. Now call the meeting to order. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We have a couple of additions and two deletions that we would like for you to consider this First addition is a request to approve the purchase of five parcels located at, uh, at the southwest intersection, southwest of South Bay Grove Road and, and South Highway 331. Those parcels are listed in your agenda package for the negotiated amount of $3,742,000. The second addition is under Chairwoman Jones, and it is a, an event request called Splash Bash, and she'll talk more about it. And the event is scheduled for Saturday, August the 12th, and the gentleman will be here to make that request for that event. Under deletions, these two items are related. The first one is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the chair to sign the Second Amendment to the State of Florida DOT Small County Outreach Program Agreement, ARK-18. And then, the related item is request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Second Amendment to the State of Florida Department of Transportation SCOP Agreement, ARK-18. Those are additions and deletions.
Do we have a motion to approve with additions and deletions?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now is the time for public comments. This is the time that you can speak to anything on the agenda. If you come forward, tell me what item number, and if you can stay for the agenda item, that would be, that would be very nice. But this is the time if you need to leave early. Mr. Sheeler, are you here? He's not, so I guess he'll talk about his issue a little bit later on. Okay, seeing none, um, the consent agenda.
Motion two, please.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item that we have is...
Waste Management EAL, Commissioner Chapman.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I have a conflict of interest, so I filed a necessary form with the clerk and will abstain from the vote.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapman did not vote. Okay.
Now we'll move into the agenda. First item, Commissioners, is a request from Lee Moore, and that request is for the board to sign and transmit a letter to the Florida Department of Transportation regarding the eastern U.S. Highway 98 Gateway Landscaping Project. And in that letter, we would, you would simply be asking DOT to place this project on their prioritization list.
I make that motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I will make the second for discussion. I want to make sure we're, at this point, we are not obligated for any funding whatsoever. Correct? Okay.
Can we have a motion second? Any other comments from the Commissioners? Lee here? Lee Moore? Okay, any, any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none? Any other, so we are not obligated to any funding?
No.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. And the next item, as you know, we've been deploying some artificial reefs under the NERTA program, and Andy McAlexander is here to give us an update on, on that project.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's been exciting, about forty-seven, forty-eight days since we were, since we started this off. To date, we've put in 170 of the grouper ghettos and 185 of the eight-foot snapper pyramids. Those have gone down in the 12 permitted locations. As planned, we've dove them a couple times, and I put together a quick little three-minute video for you guys and the rest of our, rest of our citizens to take a look at and see what, so we've accomplished. And the money is from NERTA, which is the natural resources damages from one of the BP things, and it's been administered by the Fish and Wildlife Commission. This is the barge going out with a load. Pretty interesting process. So on top of the boom of the crane is a surveyor's GPS, which allows us to really pinpoint, yeah, it was, that was a fun day, really pinpoint, uh, within about three to six feet of where these structures are going. So when they go in, we're fairly certain, uh, they're within the permitted area. That's one of them dropping down. When it gets down, the buckle, the tension, when the structure hits the bottom, the tension releases, the, the buckle in that buoy unclamps it, so that comes right back up. Those are the sites that we've dropped in, about thirty to thirty-one structures per. Coming up this Thursday, we're gonna be putting in a super pyramid in each one of those, which is an eighteen-foot structure. And then, that was within about fifteen minutes of it being on the bottom, that starfish started crawling on it. We dove it, uh, there's a bottom reading of them. It was amazing, we dove the Topsail site two weeks after we dropped it, and there were literally hundreds of fish already swarming around it, critterfish, snappers, gray snappers. Pretty amazing stuff. Thankfully, we've had a lot of volunteers, but one person I wanna mention to is Melinda Gates, and how she has absolutely gone above and beyond what anybody expected from the people that we have involved in this deployment thing. Every single day, we've been on the water, she's been there, meeting me at 5:30 in the morning at Dewey Destin's launch. I mean, dedicated group, and making sure this happens without a hitch. That's what they look like on the bottom. Within two weeks, look at those fish. We had one strap break and the reef tumped over and hit the side of the barge. They did replace it, thankfully, but that's what it looks like when it goes down wrong. Um, and it did fall inside the permitted area, so everything's cool there. The other update is, that will complete one of the three NERTA contracts that we have with Walter Marine. The second one will be done on Thursday with the Super Reef Deployment. And the third and final deployment will be the three remaining snorkel reefs. That'll be on, beginning on August 7th or night, 8th, somewhere in there, and proceed for the next couple of weeks, weather permitting, and get them in at Miramar, Topsail, and Inlet Beach.
Andy, didn't you name each reef? Was, does each reef or each have a, a name?
The naming rights for the things, through the SWARA organization, they can, you know, companies and individuals can purchase naming rights for various different reefs. The snorkel reefs are in shapes and designs, so they're gonna be, there's a dolphin at, uh, at, uh, Miramar, there's a seahorse at the Topsail site, and a cobia is the design for down at Inlet Beach.
Wow. So it sounds like all we need is our fish hatchery, so we can put some more fish out there?
Ma'am, anything, it all helps.
Have to plug that. So any other questions, comments?
No, I just, I'd just like to comment, thank Andy for his work, but also thank Melinda. Melinda's put in a lot of time on this, not only on this project, but on all of our environmental projects, and she's really done a good job, so I'd like to thank her also.
Definitely. Well, thank you, Commissioners, and I look forward to seeing you when you're finished.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, the next item is item number 33. It's the selection of county attorney. If you will look in your board book, under tab 33, you have two ranking sheets. I wanna point out that the first one is for Commissioners, and the second ranking sheet is for the clerk to tally your scores. If you look at, um, a, as you know, give you a little bit of history, we advertised the position. You guys interviewed, um, three candidates. Those were Carly Hermanson, Sidney Noyes, and Renee Yule. Each of those candidates are listed in those three columns. What we would like for you to do is, in the first column, circle your first choice; the second column, circle your second choice; and the third column, circle your third choice. And then, when the clerk tallies those scores, three points will be awarded to the first choice, two points awarded to the second choice, and three, and one point awarded to Mr. Clerk, do you have one of the tally sheets?
I'll do that.
We can move on, yes, ma'am. Item number 34 is a request to appoint a new citizen member to serve on the Value Adjustment Board due to the resignation of Shaney Betts. We had advertised this on the website, soliciting volunteers at a couple meetings ago. Do any of you have someone that you want to appoint to this board?
Uh, who turned in applications? Do we have just one or more?
Just one.
One? Who is the one?
Janice McLean.
Okay. Janice McLean. Someone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Janice McLean.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, any other comments? Comments from the audience on Janice McLean being on the VAB? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to award RFP 017, 016 for Disaster Response Services to Ashbrit, and approve and authorize the chairwoman to sign the contract. This is a contract that's been in place for post-disaster cleanup. It's been with Crowder Gulf. That contract was up. We went out for RFP and, uh, we recommended approval of Ashbrit.
And both got, all of the same score, if I'm reading this right, and I wish you were the decision of going with Ashbrit.
I asked that question this morning, and Mr. Goldberg was part of the evaluation team, and his, um, explanation to me was Ashbrit's technical response to the project.
I'll make a motion, Chief.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience on this issue? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is regarding the Walton County Sports Park, Sports Complex. We put that out for bid, as you know, after, um, after it being advertised, we received only one bid back. That bid was from CW Roberts. As you can see in your packet, the bid was above budget. However, we have, amongst staff, we have taken a look at some things, and we believe that we can do some value engineering and get this to, uh, to budget or very close to budget. And so, what we would ask of you today is to, um, award this bid to the low bidder, CW Roberts, but that would be contingent upon a reduction in cost and the value engineering that we would accomplish to get it within or very close to, uh, budget, and then we would bring you back a contract for your approval.
I'd like to ask Rick some questions.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve at this point.
Have a motion?
A second.
Motion a second.
Rick?
Yes, ma'am.
You and I were speaking the other day, and I have this neato, nifty little...
Very colorful, yes, ma'am.
Very colorful display of, of what apparently that we can pay for and what that we cannot pay for.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know one of them, if I remember correctly, was lighting, that we do not have any money in the budget to, to, for example, pay for...
Well, that's why we're trying to value engineer, Commissioner, and get down so that we can incorporate the lights. You know, with the getting dark around 4:30 here in daylight savings time, it's, you know, administration, I know you Commissioners feel it paramount to have lighting out there, so we're working diligently to get down to a number that's palatable and, and can sustain lighting, uh, in the budget. So we, we're just looking for your direction so that we can, we can work together and try to get that price down. Yes, ma'am.
And how much totally refresh my memory, are we paying for this park? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, how much, will you refresh my memory? How much are we paying for this park?
We have $6.1 million left in the budget after we purchased land, split the cost of building, road, utilities.
What did you have originally?
$10 million.
Okay. My point is, I, I saw an email this morning that said we, we weren't spending money on parks in South Walton, and I kinda wanted to clear up that, that problem there.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, because we are, it's just that we don't have enough money to go around. Um, I just wanna throw out a suggestion, it may not work, um, our legal team can tell me, but I know recently that, um, we had a, a member of our family that needed some help, um, and there was a thing called GoFundMe, where you went on and gave money to, to help this family, and, and a lot of people did. Can we do the same thing for this park? Can we do like a go, and, and help pay for these lights and help pay for this stuff that people want but we can't afford to pay for? Is that possible?
That's something I can look into, Commissioner Commander. I do know for, um, I'm sorry. I do know for the skate park, we did receive a, a grant from a nonprofit group to help pay for the skate park improvements, so maybe a partnership like that would...
And, you know, Commissioner, there's some of the items here that we've, we've discussed with you Commissioners and administration that we're gonna have to phase in. Um, you know, one of them looks like possibly tennis courts, you know, but there's a large contingency of people who want tennis courts and pickleball courts, so maybe there's something that we can work with them on fundraising for to, to get these amenities, 'cause what we're building to right now is what our biggest need is, which is youth sports. We have thousands of kids down there, they're squeezed on these fields, there's nowhere to go. It causes fights and, and problems at this park that, uh, creates more work for our staff and for you Commissioners. So, um, this is our goal, to identify, you know, what is most important, um, get that out there, and then have a plan to phase in these additional items as we go along.
But, you know, most people want them right now, and I understand that.
Absolutely.
Um, but, you know, I look back in the days when dinosaurs roamed the earth, and I had children, small children, you know, you helped pay for some of the things they wanted to do, whether it was Little League or whatever. So, um, I, I just have a feeling that there are a lot of parents out there that would help if they knew what the money was going to, and if we, you know, said lights or, you know, whatever. I just, if you would look into that, and if we could start that, I think that would move the whole thing a lot faster, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and we would get a better park, and people would get what they want. I know in the baseball program, uh, the league had to turn kids away that, that just didn't have room for them.
Absolutely.
So, when we do this, can you start the baseball part first, so that maybe we'll have that ready next season?
The way that the schedule is lining up right now, if we can value engineer her in the next couple of weeks, yes, ma'am, we can do it, and we'll, we'll work with the, with the contractor to make sure that whatever sport is ready at that time period, which we believe is baseball, have those fields ready first, if baseball can play, and then by the time soccer and football comes around, those fields are done as well. Yes, ma'am.
Right, thank you.
Just, so, uh, everybody knows, it hadn't been brought before the board yet, but Rick and I've talked, and I've pledged quite a bit of money.
Yes, you have, sir.
My plat fee for that, and for Helen McCall.
Yes, sir.
So...
You've been very gracious, and without the money that you've, you're, you've pledged to us, we can't do lighting, so yes, sir, you're, it's a big part of what we're doing. We appreciate it very much.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a Triumph update and request for direction on structure and process pursuant to House Bill 7077. I believe Billy Williams is here to give us that update.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Bill Chapman makes me laugh, I'm always on mic restriction, so I'll be very, very fast. Basically, three, three quick elements. As you are aware, um, the Triumph Board met, now that it's been completely seated with the seven new members. Past Senate President Chairman Gates, uh, will take over in January, and Jason Show from Gulf County to cover in the eastern flank. They're working with their new executive director, Susan Skelton, and members of the legal team, which is Burke and Blue, to draft out, um, uh, application processes. They're gonna meet monthly. For the public standpoint and for the Commissions, you can gather information on their website at myfloritatriump.com, and that scenario will be ongoing as that website gets up. But they're looking at different offices throughout the panhandle, so that we will have direct access, not only to the members but to staff as they go through that. Which leads us to the statute itself, and having direction from you all. Um, in the statute, it requires that we solicit, um, applications or grant applications from municipalities and school boards. In the past, you have formed a committee, uh, for example, to work with the POT1 money on the federal side. My suggestion would be the same. What I'd like to do, uh, with these requests this morning, is to allow Stan and Larry and I to kinda work on a structure that we could come back based on the formulation that they're working on, but ask you to, to consider appointing a couple folks, um, uh, here in the next couple of weeks, I'd say, in the, you know, next two or three meetings, so that we can begin the work of that process. So we'll need to be very technical, like we did before, in accepting those applications. And as you remember, that takes that 5%, which guarantees, uh, each county $15 million of this first payment of the $300 million. But there's also a remaining $160 million, so we wanna put all of our projects, work with our school boards, our state college, our technical college, et cetera. So with, uh, the request on this specific issue would be that you allow us to start advertising folks, um, that are interested in serving. Then we'll come back, uh, once I have direction from Stan and Larry, uh, we'll come back with the structure and how that board would actually operate. So I'll pause there. Madam Chair, with questions on that particular issue?
Do we have any questions?
Do you want us to come up with board members, or you and Stan and Larry come up with board members, or how do you wanna do this?
I, I would, it's certainly your, your prerogative and your privilege. I think we can give you a structure with the number and the scope and the structure of what they would do.
Okay.
But I would certainly encourage you to start thinking about folks that have been involved, and folks that are very important to our community, and all the elements that Triumph suggests. So I just wanted to put it in, you know, in front of you to start considering that. But yes, sir, we'll come back with a structure and a scope, kind of again like you did with POT1, but yes, sir, ultimately, it will be your appointees that, that will represent the county in that effort.
Commissioner, what we can do is, we can come around and meet with each of you individually and get your input, and then come back with something for board approval.
Okay.
Sounds like a good plan to me. And the Restore Committee will stay intact, uh, and this will be a Triumph Board, basically?
Yes, ma'am, because we're, we're in the process, the multi-year plan, that now I'm skipping to the federal side, this is the state side related to the requirements that we have to do under state statute. On the federal side and those requirements, we do need to basically reactivate that board. As the board recalls, we started looking at all of the projects, Melinda did a great job with vetting different projects and the structure of that. Um, when we get final approval, and we anticipate that to be any day now with our first phase, we'll need to open up Phase Two. So I'll get with, again, with Stan and with Melinda, we'll send letters out, reengage them, and let them know, once that's approved, we'll stand that committee back up, um, and start working on that. Because, again, we wanna link those dollars. Most of you Commissioners were meeting with Treasurer when we met a few weeks ago, they did allow us or talk to us about taking a Triumph project or out of our POT1 money and link it. So we wanna strategically link. So even though these committees are separate in their focus and their function, they're connected because we can leverage the funds, so those two boards will work independently but collaboratively.
Sure. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience on the Restore or Triumph, uh, process that we're fixing to undertake? Okay, and we are having roundtable meetings, I'll talk to you a little bit more about under, under my name today.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we, we have direction on that.
Are you ready, um, Madam Chairman?
Uh-huh. Yes.
Madam Chair, the tally for the vote count for the attorney, County Attorney Final Ranking Score Sheet. Carly Hermanson, five total points. Sidney Noyes, 12 total points. Renee Yule, seven total points.
So congratulations, Sidney.
Thank you, Commissioners. I look forward to continuing, continue working with you all. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Does he need to announce the tally of each one?
Yes, ma'am, I'm impressed.
And do we appoint somebody to negotiate with her, or...
I was gonna ask, what was the next step for her to pick the number two over there? Uh, I think that's historically been whoever the county attorney was. It's their, their call on eventually to bring it to the board, but she would probably reach out and make that selection, and I would urge you to do so quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Along with that one that would... Along with that one that would, across the bay down there with planning.
Yes, sir.
Are you ready for the detail?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Anderson. Sidney Noyes, number one. Renee Yule, number two. Carly Hermanson, number three. Commissioner Commander. Sidney Noyes, number one. Renee Yule, number two. Carly Hermanson, number three. Commissioner Chapman. Sidney Noyes, number one. Carly Hermanson, number two. Renee Yule, number three. Commissioner Jones. Sidney Noyes, number one. Renee Yule, number two. Carly Hermanson, number three.
So, and we will ask administration to work with Sidney on negotiations and the process of appointing a second attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Strategic plan.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request for a strategic plan. We would like to, like your, Bill wants to come on up, I'm going to need you to fill in the gaps. We would like tentative approval, or we would like your approval to engage the West Florida Regional Planning Council to help develop a strategic plan and...
And I saw Austin Mount here too, if we need to bring him up.
Yes, ma'am. The West Florida Regional Planning Council is here. Commissioner Chapman, I get three more minutes.
We'll start...
This is a separate issue.
We'll start you over.
This is a separate issue. I'm kidding. This is really important, particularly with these fundings that the chairman has pointed out. This gives the county the opportunity to think long-term and linear because of these terms being over fifteen years. And certainly working with our community and the outreach that the chairman's going to speak of later, it was very clear that we need to augment our ongoing strategic planning with the opportunity. Austin came to me a couple of weeks ago, well, actually a week ago, I think, and basically said, "We think with working with U.S. EDA, we can get a fifty percent match into this process." So the board-specific action item is to allow the Regional Planning Council to go after that grant, which would obviously offset fifty percent of what the ultimate cost would be. In that process, while they're applying for that grant, and I think, and he could speak more to the terms, but I think we would know something over the next thirty or sixty days, they will compile a scope and a structure that is driven by the commission and the administration on where we want to go with it. But this would be truly a comprehensive plan. So when you look at our environmental planning from parks and recreations, you look at stormwater, you look at the different issues, which will work in parallel to where we're going with our projects, we're very focused on the process versus the projects. This strategic plan will guide us with what we're asking for in these dollars. So today, we're asking for the board to give us permission to engage them with this fifty percent match so that they can start that technical assistance grant, and then we'll come back once they have a scope compiled and we'll get further direction from the board.
I believe, didn't you say, and you might have said this, but you already have maybe secured some funding toward the strategic plan for us?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's good to be back in front of you guys. So with this application to the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, that will be the potential funding that we could tap into. It's not necessar, it's a competitive cycle, so we do have to submit an application, but they are sitting on quite a bit of money right now. The indication that I've got so far is a good indication that we could receive some funding. It is, again, a competitive cycle, so it's subject...
I know it's not guaranteed, but you will go after that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Comments from the, well, do we need a motion first? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments from the audience, questions from the audience? I know when we were doing the roundtable events, strategic planning was a topic that was, you know, everyone wanted. I heard strategic plan and I heard working together. Those were the two things that, important things that have come out of the roundtable. So strategic plan is very, very important to our county. We can't very well go out and start getting projects unless we want hodgepodge, unless we have a strategic plan, and then it will mesh and bring our projects together, in my opinion. So can you have a motion second? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve the purchase of five parcels located southwest of the intersection of South Bay Grove Road and Highway 331 South, identified as parcels As you know, we've been negotiating for quite some time with the owner on these five parcels. We have reached a negotiated amount of three million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and we would recommend your approval of that.
Stan?
Yes, sir.
Would you go into a little bit on the cleanup requirements on parcel B, I believe it is, and what you negotiated out there?
It's actually parcel A.
Okay.
It's a point-six-five acre parcel. That is where the old Bay Grove gas station was located. There were some petroleum tanks underground. Those have been removed. The site is what DEP considers as an active petroleum cleanup site. They are still in the evaluation phase and will, we believe, very, in very short order, move into the remediation phase. And so we have talked with DEP. We do anticipate some cleanup, some remediation. There is a cost associated with that, but we've talked with the owner about that, and that was negotiated into the process of the property.
Thank you.
Where would the funds come from to purchase this?
Funds would come from the excess 331 bridge half-cent surtax.
And how much would we have left that we could do? Some bathrooms, just approximately?
Melissa, what would that leave us? About three million?
About that. We've probably got five or seven in there now.
Some restrooms and, yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Questions from the audience, comments from the audience?
You want a motion first?
Oh, yeah, I thought I had one.
Motion to approve.
Have one? Oh, second, yeah.
Motion second. Okay, now, any comments from the audience? Thank you for keeping me on track.
No, I'm lost.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we'll bring you back a purchase agreement at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is item forty-one. It's requesting permission to advertise for bids for the Helen McCall Park Improvement Project. This park improvement project would change the location of the existing football field and add an additional football field, a new parking lot, new building to the house, the press box, concession stand, fieldhouse and bathrooms, and lighting would be provided as well. So we would request your approval to put this on the street.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Any other comments? This is most needed, and it's very exciting to see all this going in, so... Any other comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is in regards to Lake Drive in the north end of the county. We've had a problem with speeding, and this request is regarding direction for the implementation of a traffic calming device and reducing the posted speed limit from thirty-five to thirty on that Lake Drive as recommended by the sheriff.
Okay, and this is kind of, this has been an ongoing problem with the speeding and I've been working with residents. We have a petition that's signed by just about everybody on Lake Drive. So do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion second?
I'll second for discretion. One of the things that I agree with all of this, except the speed bumps, don't we chance or, don't we tell people that speed bumps are dangerous and we shouldn't do them? And what about just using rumble strips? Or are you in favor of speed bumps at this location? Somebody from engineering?
What about, when I was Commissioner, what about the traffic table? That is not the bump itself. It's an elevated approach, a flat area at the top, and then you come down again. So that's different than that hump down there next to Taco Bell.
And I understand that's what you're, you're planning on doing, isn't it? Traffic tables?
Commissioner, what we're putting here is a speed table that's specifically manufactured and designed to control speeds at thirty miles an hour.
Okay, good.
It's a purchased manufactured piece.
Everywhere, you know, in the past, we've talked about speed bumps. They've said, "No, that we're liable if a car gets torn up and that sort of thing."
Yes, ma'am.
That sounds like it's a perfect solution. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? Mr. Smith?
Uh...
Come on up to the podium and state your name and spell your last name and...
My name is Charles Smith. I live on Lake Drive in the north end of Walton County, and I've lived there since nineteen eighty-four. Every person living in that, in that short stretch, it's probably maybe a half a mile long, has signed the petition asking for this. It is a real problem. We've tried to address it in the past with more patrols from the sheriffs, and they just don't have the manpower to be out there all the time and patrol that area. I think we've just heard some mention of something that I refer to as a speed hump, which is the table, which would be much less obtrusive to other vehicles passing, safety vehicles that might have to pass. But this really needs to be done. You guys have put a walkway up there around Lake Jackson, around most of the, around about half of the Florida portion of the lake. So you've got more and more people walking. You've got families out there that have small children, and it's, like I say, it's been a problem for years, and I think this would fix the problem. It's kind of strange, yesterday I was, I was actually coming, coming on that road from the opposite end where most of the speeders come from, and there's a, there's a triangle area up there, and a young man was stopped there in a truck, and I pulled up behind him and I didn't, you know, he didn't, he didn't move, so I pulled up beside him and he was talking on his cell phone, and I said, "Oh, okay, I was just going to check, make sure nothing was wrong." And he said, "Oh, no." And so I pulled out, headed toward my house, had, actually headed north to my house, and here's this little teenage guy in a truck, and I'm going thirty miles an hour, which is, you know, plenty, plenty fast. After just speaking to him, he just blows around me, you know, zoom, down the lake road. And the problem is with, mostly with teenage boys and trucks. But it's been a problem since day one, and I think this would solve it. There, the walkway, there is a crosswalk right in front of my house where they walk from one side of the walkway to the other. That would be a perfect place for one of these speed tables. Actually, it could be on the crossing, and if you could see fit to place maybe a couple of more, you know, in areas where you would deem they were necessary, that would solve this problem. Don't know how you warn people that they got a speed table coming, you know, rumble strips or signs or maybe a combination of the two, and I think every resident up there would appreciate it and thank you and support you in any way they could.
I see one comment on here, it says trucks at night, street racing.
Yeah, that, that happens. I mean, you'll hear them go by, and it's, I mean, it's really a dangerous situation. I mean, they actually do race there, and if, you know, one truck hits another truck and they go zooming off the road and run into a house or a trailer, one of the mobile homes there, there's not that many of those, but if somebody's walking, it's, it could be disastrous, so...
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to acknowledge receipt of the 2016 tax roll recapitulation for discounts, errors, double assessments, and insolvencies presented to Florida Statute 197, 492. This documentation's been received, and we're requesting that the board acknowledge receipt of the, of the tax roll recapitulation for 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Or a motion second? Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Okay. Thank you. The next is an update regarding the Car Riggs and Ingram mid-year testing of preservation and rec plat fee monies, and I'm going to have Melissa, come on up, Melissa, speak to you on that update.
Good morning. Just to give you a history of how this has come about, because this is not something that's normally done, the auditors, Car Riggs and Ingram, after the audits finished every year, they meet with y'all individually just to go over the results of the audit. And after they had done so, they came back to us and let us know that Commissioners had expressed some interest in having them kind of do a mid-year review of the planning fees, just to see, were we on track with improvements made with how, how these are being checked? So they did come back, they did test these from October 2016 to April 2017. They did see that there was a significant change. Up until January, we, our office was reviewing rec plat fees. After that, we started reviewing both rec plat and preservation fees. They did see that each one had a checklist, each, each project had a checklist that ensured that the fees were reviewed and paid by the developer prior to additional work started on the developments. They did find one error, and it was due to the way they were doing it, they were sending us the parcel ID and we were recalculating it. There was parcel ID missed because there were two in that development order. So we changed our procedure. Now they send us the development order to make sure that we have all parcels included, and so we've modified our procedure too. As we go along, we'll keep modifying if we see any improvements that can be made, but they did say they saw an improvement in the way these were being processed.
Any questions from Melissa? Do we have a motion to approve?
It's just an update.
Just an update. Don't need a motion. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Melissa, if you'd hang tight, I think you're going to probably have some questions on the next item. It's, Commissioners, the next item is some information regarding a Teladoc program and request for your direction regarding moving forward with this program in fiscal year 2018. Teladoc is a program, and Melissa's been working with the insurance carrier to bring this to you. It's a program by which smartphone users, employees, retirees can obtain video consultations with a physician twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and potentially avoid costly ER visits, urgent care visits, and face-to-face physician appointments for routine physical ailments. The cost associated with this program for fiscal year eighteen is sixty-five thousand dollars, and if you have any questions for Melissa, she's been working directly with them. But we request your direction on that.
Melissa, in our conversation, I asked you to look into the possibility of this being available to retirees. I think everybody knows if you go to the ER on a Saturday night, you're going to spend about fifteen hundred dollars. Whereas you might be able, one phone call to this Teladoc, you might be able to clear it up relatively quick and save that person time, save us money on our, eventually, there's enough of it, the premiums should see a reduction there.
We should. And I did check on the retirees. We have fifty-five retirees on county insurance, so it would add about three hundred and sixteen dollars a month to the cost of it.
Three hundred and sixteen dollars?
Three sixteen. And I talked to Bay County's risk manager. They've had this program for seven years, and her word to describe it was amazing. In trying to find out who to talk to, I ended up talking to employees answering the phone and got one that told me how much she loved the program. It seems to be, it seems to be a good program. I have not heard anything negative about it. It seems like the only negative I can find is if you call them and the doctor says, "You got something viral, we're not going to give you an antibiotic," which you could have just as easily at the doctor's office. Overall, there's a ninety-two percent success rate, and they resolve whatever you've called about ninety-two percent of the time without you going to another physician. Overall, there's a ninety-two percent success rate, and they resolve whatever you've called about ninety-two percent of the time without you going to another physician.
Well, we looked at a few years back of taking and putting a, a county clinic, if you will, for employees, and that got pretty costly pretty quick.
It did, and Bay County told me they had done the same thing. They just simply could not afford to do that, so when they started looking at other alternatives, that's how they came up with this one.
Right. Well, that's what I was alluding to. We looked at that. It was costly. Not sure how many people actually go down there. This here pretty, is pretty much convenient to the employee. They can call from their house and try and get something.
And there's no co-pay, so that, that is a, a big incentive. It, it, it sounds, and everything that I found out about it, it sounds like educating the employees, and not just the employees, but their spouses who might be the ones setting up visits, doctors' visits for the children and themselves, educating everyone on using it, because you have a really big incentive in that you do not have to go out, go to that urgent care, be around other sick people, and pay a co-pay.
When will we start this if we elected to go there?
We could start it October the first.
Okay.
And I did want to remind everyone that we do have that pro-share agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield, where every two years they do accounting, an, an accounting of what we've paid in versus the claims and administrative expenses. And whatever excess premiums we've paid, we get half of that back. So potentially, we can get half the money back for every dollar that we save on claims.
And that could be used towards this additional benefit.
And, and Bay County, how long, how long do you say they've been using?
I think they've had it three or four years. She told me, but I didn't write it down, but it's been...
Have they noticed, has it been long enough, they noticed that it has kept their premiums?
She did. She said, she said they could... She said they could really tell that, they could tell the utilization rate. She, she was looking at utilization rates by department, because if you have a thirty-five percent utilization rate, that means if you've got a thousand people on it, then they've had three hundred and fifty visits. She said some of the departments had a hundred and forty percent utilization rate.
I just have a trivial question. How many of our employees do you think have smartphones? All of them?
The vast majority, it seems like. And it doesn't have to be... It doesn't have to be a smartphone. It can be a smartphone, a computer, or a tablet. And I, I was looking, I've looked on the internet because I, I really had questions about how they would do some of this. They actually will look in your throat, in your child's ear, through the, the video app on the phone.
Wow. Okay.
And commissioners, it was recommended by the insurance committee as well.
Yes, it was.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you also consider including the retirees in that also?
Most definitely. Yes, sir.
As with my second also.
Any other comments, comments from the audience, questions from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
I'd much rather stay home than...
Question.
Just, come on up so you can speak in the, um, mic, please.
As, as a pharmacist who owns, uh, my own pharmacy, my store is actually in Florala, which is in Alabama, of course, right on the Walton County, Al- Coveney County line. There are no pharmacies in North Walton County. Where would these, uh, patients get prescriptions? Do the doctors send them into the local pharmacies or wherever they direct them to?
With the doctor, where they direct them to.
Okay. What about controlled drugs? Do they do any controlled drugs?
I don't know if they do any controlled drugs. I would think if it's something that, a lot of them, you have to pick up that prescription physically, I don't know that they can do that.
Well, I mean, you can, you can send controlled drugs electronically now. That would be my only concern, and I don't, I don't, I don't think this is, um, I don't think this has been leg- legalized in Alabama. I'm not really sure. But if it's legal in Florida, of course, I would, I would fill a prescription, but I don't think controlled drugs should be a part of this.
They don't do controlled drugs over the farm.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is number forty-six, and it's a request, uh, for approval to advertise and hold a public hearing on August the eighth, two thousand seventeen, for the purpose of considering an ordinance renewing the ninth cent local option fuel tax. This is something that has to be done every ten years, and it's time to do it again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Melissa, you want to take forty-seven?
Our next item is to request an update. I wanted to give you an update regarding the public workshops to discuss a potential half-cent sales sur- surtax for transportation and, and see where y'all wanted to go next with this. At the May ninth board meeting, the board approved staff to advertise and hold two public workshops on these, this potential half-cent sales tax. We held these on June fifteenth, one here and one at the South Walton Annex. And we just wanted to, to get back with the board, the, we, we provided information regarding all the tran- the transportation needs and potential projects that could be done with these sales tax funds. And we wanted to come back to the board to see if y'all would like to discuss further, or if, if you would like to discuss any further action regarding these items.
How were these, how was attendance at these two meetings?
It was pretty low. We did, we had a handful of people, I would say, um, we had a few from the Chamber of Commerce at the south end meeting, and we had a few, um, citizens here in the north end.
When you say a few, what are we talking about?
I would say probably maybe ten total, about ten total.
Ten combined? That's not very good.
I believe there were three or four in the north end, and I didn't attend the south end, so I think it was maybe the same or just a little more down there.
Well, you know, I kind of began looking into this because we're going to have to find a way to either pay for, um, paving of roads or look at people and say, sorry, we can't pave your road. We're looking at, we need money for parks. We need money for this, that, and the other. Where's it going to come from other than raising people's property taxes? And I am somewhat adamantly opposed to that. But I think at this particular time, I think so much has gotten wrapped around the axle, and there's, there's so many different scenarios and side streets and everything else going on with this. I, I, I for one think right now we need to table this discussion. Let's bring it back up at a later time. Maybe we can get with public works and, and get more definite. I don't know, but that's just, I, I have a, I have a, a feeling that maybe we need to table it, and that's just my...
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this half-cent, keep in mind, sixty-two percent of these sales taxes are paid by the tourists that travel and use every road that's inside this county.
Yes, sir.
And that's the only way that is fair to recoup some of the costs associated with these roads. If they're paying sixty-two percent of it, I think in your, your handout here, it shows what it would cost an individual depending on what they may purchase. Uh, so it's, it's relatively inexpensive. If you look at it, we used the half-cent for the bridge, and the tourists helped pay for that bridge down there, and it ended up, we got a, a good chunk of money back, and we had some leftover too that's helping put some parks in. So, with, if we don't do that or move forward to do that, then what we'll end up doing, as I said before, when you only put about two million dollars a year into the county's public works for paving roads, and we already have identified a, around fifty miles of road plus a bunch of bridges, some of them that were built back in the sixties, then we'll never get them replaced or fixed. So it just, you extrapolate it out. If you, two million dollars will get you about a mile and a half of work, and you got fifty-something miles, figure it out. It's over fifty years before you'll ever get through that list there. With three hundred and something miles of dirt roads in this county, we'll all be turning dirt up, so...
And, and I, I totally agree with absolutely everything you're saying. I just feel like there's so much opposition right now and so much misinformation that maybe we need to wait a few months, but, you know, I'm...
Well, there's opposition just about everything that comes before this board.
That's true.
And, uh, we can, you can kick it down the, can down the road now, or go ahead and, um, belly up to the barn and make it happen. Or at least get it out there and let the people decide if this is what they want. If they don't want it, then it, we just have to deal with what we have available every year for our budget.
My, my concern is that we're not allowed to lobby either way, and do we have an organization that's willing to? Because this is, you know, we need to inform the public of what they're voting on. And unless someone stepped up to do that, um, then it would be a mute point, as far as I'm concerned. We, we, because you really have to do this as a campaign. You have to, you know, let people know what they're voting for exactly, and, um, given the information, then they can make an informed decision. It's, it, you know, without us being able to get involved in that, it's, it's, um, so do we have someone, I guess is what I'm asking, that's willing to?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, should we maybe allow staff to see if there's anybody out there? And we, I guess we can do that part of it, can't we?
Yes, sir. And, uh, one option, I know that the school district, um, a couple of years ago, had a referendum for their capital improvement projects. We could ask them how they handled, um, handled that and promoting that project or that referendum.
Good idea, Mr. Chair.
Well, maybe that, what we do, or to do for directions, just instruct staff to go ahead and maybe reach out, see if there's any organization or individual that wants to champion this, since we can't do it personally.
That's a great idea.
Give it a, and then he comes up with a good one, doesn't he?
Okay, so just direction on that.
Any doubt, and a motion, Sid?
No, sir. Uh, just direction to staff, so Melissa and I can work on that.
And we might want to consider, I don't know how often the school board does a referendum, uh, and I don't know if we would want to piggyback on that, just if there's a time that, that we're already voting on something, that would save some money if we could collaborate together. I, I don't know, so...
I'll look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Commissioners, the next item is request to approve a resolution establishing the South Walton tax increment financing, the TIF percentage for the two thousand eighteen fiscal year. Staff's requesting that, uh, resolution, resolution be passed allocating the recommended value from the FY eighteen budget workshop to the TIF fund, providing a total funding amount for FY eighteen of four million and thirty thousand dollars. Four million, thirty thousand, one hundred and three dollars. My fault.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Mr. Tucson, do you have any updates?
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman. Good morning, commissioners. Just one quick update, and then if you have any questions, I mean. Um, at, at the last BCC meeting, we had some concerns that were expressed on a TDC's involvement under beach flag, um, warning system. And so I thought it'd be prudent to, uh, have, um, Fire Chief Rick Talbert come up and explain that process and how that works. So, um, I'd like to have him kind of just walk you through that process and what happens there. And then if you have any questions for either he or myself, I'd be happy to take this after he addresses the board.
Welcome, Chief Talbert.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Rick Talbert, South Walton Fire District. I'll be very brief. I, I feel like I'm explaining something to a group that's very supportive of our beach safety program and really already knows the answer to, but let me just, for the, for the benefit of everyone, they understand where we're at. As you know, the beach safety division is designated by you, the county commissioners, through the TDC as the primary subject matter expert regarding beach flag conditions to independently assess, determine, publish, educate, and protect our public. And that's what we do, and we pride ourselves in that. And I feel like we're wired a little bit differently in this regard, that our lifeguards, our firefighter, paramedics, all of us within our fire district, and public safety for that matter, we unmistakably put others before ourselves. And that's our mission, and that's our goal, to keep our citizens, our visitors, safe at all times. You know, and we feel like we earn the confidence and respect of our community. I feel like it's regrettable that if we have members of our community or former members of our community that we didn't earn their respect and garner their confidence that they would even question that. And it's regrettable that, you know, we were at the meeting, really thirty minutes before that last meeting, and we could have been asked and really clarified and cleared that up before whatever got brought up about any allegation that anybody changes those flags or determines that, other than your fire district. So let me just make sure I go on the record and tell you that South Walton Beach Safety and our fire district does not accept outside direction to change the status for the sake of convenience, negative feedback from the public, private entities, partnered governmental agencies, nor any other reason other than ensuring the safety and well-being of our public. And I will close with this, because this was brought up at the last meeting, and I also feel this is regrettable. I'm not saying this doesn't happen out in the world today, but I want to make sure I go on record that in our inquiry, in my personal inquiry in this matter, no jobs or no lives were lost in the inquiry looking into this matter about beach safety, because it was told at this dais, or to you, that in fear of somebody's job or would be in jeopardy if they, if they explained what they thought occurred in the events that led up to the incident coming, coming forth. No one lost their job. No one was disciplined. We own what we do. We're transparent. When we find gaps or identify gaps in what we're doing, we, we fix those. So, uh, we've asked our guards to be extra diligent in that, you know, we're looking after over thirty, thirty-one to be exact, beach flag poles among our twenty, uh, six miles of beach. Our lifeguard's doing an incredible job evaluating the surf conditions, our visitors. They're sometimes asked to be arbiters between public and private entities, uh, perceived and actual vendor issues who we, uh, enjoy a great working relationship with. So there's a lot going on. We just ask them to be extra vigilant, and when we're evaluating conditions, pay particular attention to those flag poles to make sure, because they are exposed to the salt air, uh, weather conditions, and they can break. Flags can fray or even broke. And unfortunately, in this case, what we found, we not only had one, but we had two poles that were vandalized, where the flags were taken down, how yards were cut, and the boxes were broken into, locks broke, and all the flags were taken. So we, that issue's been corrected in cooperation with the TDC, but I'll, I'll leave it there and just let you know that we're on top of what we're doing. We appreciate your support, and again, uh, the call for beach flags and the conditions there for beach safety on our beaches, uh, we handle. We don't take, allow any other input from any other entity. So if I can answer any other questions or any questions for you, I'd be glad to do so.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say, I've, I've met with Chief Talbert on several different issues and, and have found him to be nothing but professional. And he runs a Taunt ship, and he has a top-notch fire department and lifeguard service. I would, I would dare say there's a human being alive that could get him to give up his character to change something that he knows is wrong. He is an honorable man, and we don't agree on everything, but I do respect him for the job he does. He is top-notch and, and would never, just never endanger anybody's safety for any reason.
I'll second that.
Thank you. On behalf of the men and women of the fire district, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Chief Talbert for coming in this morning and, and presenting to the board. Uh, any questions for me at this time? No, great. Thank you.
Commissioners, I just have two items. Uh, the first item is a request, uh, to hold three additional design review board workshops on signage and lighting. The design review board's already holding workshops, um, but they've, I guess, run out of approval from you guys. So we're just asking for three additional workshops so they can wrap up their recommendations. And, and this is for the scenic ninety-eight corridor.
That moved.
Second.
A motion second. Any other comments, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the next item I have is a request to approve a resolution determining the highest and best use of, uh, certain real property owned by the county. It's unit two of the Freeport Business Center. Um, and this would allow us to go out for bids for that property. At the last meeting, you gave us authorization to go forward with the process of selling this unit and looking into, um, buying an additional unit at the Freeport Business Center.
So moved.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Tony Anderson?
Uh, yes, through, uh, great disapproval by some of my constituents in South Walden, I would like to, uh, donate thirty thousand dollars for my plat fee. This is a motion I'm making to go to, uh, help rebuild the Valley, Valley View Community Center. I've caught a lot of criti- criticism, uh, for spending money outside my district. But my predecessor had done that on several occasions and received no criticisms about it. And just so people do know, I have earmarked quite a bit of money for Helen McCall and quite a bit of money for the new, uh, South Walden Park, which is actually in Mr. Chapman's district. South Walden is about twenty years behind in youth sports, so we're trying to catch that up fast. And I've been working closely with, uh, Buddy on the Helen McCall Park and closely with, uh, Rick on the South Walden Park. So just to let those people know, I, I am taking care of South Walden in a big way.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments? Uh, I, I was in Walmart the other day, and a gentleman walked up to me and thanked me, and I really, you know, had very little to do with it, for the Valley View Community Center. He said, this center is a place that the citizens can come together. It brings their community together. So my goal is to do this. Now, I'm doing it a little different way. I'm not asking for money. I'm using Saint Joe Foundation to do a lot of the projects, but we've done Liberty. We're doing Glendale. Uh, anytime I can see a... Anytime I can see a community center that needs to be brought up to speed, then we do that, so that the community has a place to have family gatherings, weddings, just whatever, bingo, just coming together, prayer groups. These community centers are so very important. So thank you both for, or thank you Commissioner Anderson for doing that. Any other comments from the audience?
I do.
You have something you want to say, it's your district.
It's my district, yes. Commissioner Anderson, thank you very much. This will go a long way. This is an old structure, it was built in 1950, closed around 68. It was the local school. It's also a polling place, and we've taken some measures out there already, within the money that I originally put in there to try and get this thing where it's more usable. There's a lot of families in that area that use them for homecomings and family reunions, and it will be used, I believe, far more than it has been in the past because of the changes and updates that's being made there. But thank you very much for that, I know the people in the community will appreciate it also.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Commissioner Commander?
Yes, I'll just give you a brief update. You know, I held my visioning process, as I have before, about a month or so ago, started in May, and held visioning sessions throughout the county, as I have done in the past. I think actually, if Mr. Williams is still here, the visioning process and the strategic plan go hand in hand, because, can you hear me? Yeah, I think they go hand in hand, because we need to know what the citizens want as well in the strategic plan, what the citizens are looking for. So I did complete it. The items, once again, one of the things that we did this time that we haven't done in the past, and that's what this is about, we actually showed the people that came to the meetings, you know, y'all have requested several things to be done, and we've done them already. They're here, you can look and see, you requested, you know, something, say, on economic development. We've accomplished that, we're moving forward. It's just not that, you know, we listen to you and then we go on about our minutes. We do listen to the people that come to these meetings, and we had a survey online this time, where people could say what they thought the county needed, and how the best way to proceed. The items that, again, that keep coming up time after time, is the need for increased economic development, and that's what Mr. Williams is trying to do through the Triumph money, trying to, and the Restore money, trying to get us together. Again, as always, protecting our environment seems to be one of the major points. A limit amount of embarrasses that are granted in the granting process was one, which was interesting. And they want more pedestrian and multi-use path facilities. So I'm just handing you my report. I have gone out and reached out to the public, and I'm letting y'all see what we have accomplished, and moreover, what the people in this last session have suggested that we incorporate, maybe in our visioning strategic plan process.
Absolutely, and I would just bring to the board's attention, Commissioner Commander, we talked about the $85 million that the governor did wrestle through session that is specifically earmarked for VOTAC, state colleges, and Career Source. And I think her reaching out to the public and the town hall meetings that the chairman's holding, et cetera, and the commissioners are pulling, this is an important part, to be a part of it. So if we can show families, if we can show where your kids can be educated here in the economic development, I mean, we have that opportunity, so I appreciate what you're doing, and we'll just keep doing that in the different meetings. But I think that all of that will be entwined into this long-term strategic plan that we're doing. But there are pockets that we need to pivot on, which you're dealing, that are addressed with individual community pockets. And any of the other commissioners, I'll be glad to assist that as well.
Thank you, Bill. That's all I have. Commissioner Chapman?
I have nothing.
I'll start with the roundtable sessions. I thank you, Commissioner Commander, for the visioning. I think the visioning is actually a preempt for what we're, the implementation stage, it just all blends together, and without the visioning, we really wouldn't be here, we would be visioning. So we have had two roundtable meetings, well-attended. The first one, Bill Williams spoke about the different pots and how much money Walton County could look forward to getting. And the second one, we had West Florida Regional Planning Council come in and do some strategic, well, some planning on, you know, mapping of what we see as our basic needs, and I think it was infrastructure that came out, probably water sewer on 331, that was number one. So we started with that, and like I said earlier, the two things that have come out of these meetings that really impressed me is that we have to work together. We are truly one Walden. Our city council, our county commission, our community, our business leaders, if we can all work together to spend this money, we can make Walden County a wonderful place to live. We're going to have another meeting, we're going to move around the county, we're going to try to go to Freeport August the 16th from 3:00 to 5:00. So if you have not attended one and you want to come, and we're trying to video some of them, so you can see what's going on in that world. So exciting times, just a great time to be in Walden County. What, truly, and I've said this so many times, what was meant for our harm, we have an opportunity with some money that we would have never seen, to move our county forward with infrastructure, for jobs, for business growth, and all kinds of things that we have been wanting to do for a long time. My next agenda item would be the Splash Bash. Jason Sheeler, would you come up and talk about this a little bit? It's a fun activity for kids, and helping with backpacks and child ID, and I'll let you, I won't steal your thunder, I'm about to.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. My name is Jason Sheeler, the pastor of Hope Lutheran Church in South Walton. I was honored to address you before about an event we did at Driftwood Park, the Egg Drop, Egg Drop Loozie. We had over 500 families come to the event, and about 1,000 hot dogs went out. So it was a great time, and so thank you. So we are looking to go back to the Driftwood Park to do a Splash Bash and a Backpack Blessing. So the goal is, it's going to be hot, to get people kind of gather again, to provide a fun time, to reach out, and also do some education on safety. So we will have a, we're kind of partnering with the Drug Task Force with the sheriff, and then do child ID, and then also do free haircuts, provide food, games, water slides, and also then do a blessing to them on the backpacks and to their school year. So we're looking for your permission to use that park. We talked to the water company, because we're going to need to access the fire hydrant to do water games and do a water slide and stuff like that.
And we, I talked to Mac, and there's some permitting that needs to be done, but I was wondering if we could approve this contingent on him doing the proper permitting?
That would be fine.
It'd be August 12th from 10:00 to 12:00.
So we would actually have one more meeting, the 8th, that we could approve this, if we could just give him, he needs to advertise, so kind of, you know...
To advertise and coordinate everybody and get our volunteers to do this, we need to be able to have the permission to move forward and get everything printed up. We'll do, again, like we did last time, we gave us permission to put out yard signs for that week of, and we took those down, and then we do social media and other things like that.
So moved, providing they get the permit from planning.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're approved.
Thank you very much.
Contingent on getting all these other things done, which we'll try to, it won't be a big process, so they'll work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have citizen request. Anything that's, anything you want to speak about that's not personal? If you would like to speak, raise your hand, and be recognized. Yes, sir, the gentleman in the blue shirt?
For the record, I'm Tim Banfield with the Scenic Corridor Foundation. And the Scenic Corridor Foundation is pleased to announce, we will be presenting our very first Scenic Corridor Design Excellence Award to the Tom Thumb located on Highway 98 and 95, 95, Highway 98 in Marymar Beach. We will start presenting these awards on a quarterly basis to businesses that best exemplify Scenic Corridor guidelines that have been established in Chapter 13 in Walton County's design development. And this is the award we're going to present to them. Tom Thumb did do some remodeling and modifications a while back. One thing, they moved their gas pumps to the side of the building and updated the whole building itself, and put in some real nice landscaping, and this all really falls in those guidelines. So we want to reward them for that, and we invite you all to attend if you're available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Lee Moore, and first of all, I wanted to apologize for not being here earlier when the FDOT letter item came up. I am not feeling great today, so I was a little slow going this morning. So I apologize. I heard it was approved to send the letter, so thank you very much for that approval. If you have any questions, I'm assuming you don't, if you approved it, but if you do, I'm happy to answer them, representing the Scenic Corridor Foundation and the East Corridor Improvement Project Committee. And also, I really am grateful, we are grateful for that approval. We are, Tim Banfield and I are meeting with a couple of folks from staff this afternoon to talk about potential grants that we might be able to pursue for elements of that East Corridor project. And so we are looking in every corner and under every rock for any funds that we can find for that project, and we appreciate very much the county's support. Also, just wanted to give a shout out for the 331 landscaping project. I'm sure you've all seen it, it's coming along really nicely, and the county stepped up and agreed to maintain that project, which got us a much better design and a much more robust project in the first place, and it's really showing up now that it's going into the ground. So these are all really important projects, and we hope to do many, many more all over this county, and accentuate the beauty that's already here naturally. So just thanks, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to take a 10-minute break. To speak, so Ms. Morris, you can come up now.
This is actually a city issue, but the county's involved in it. So to, just to give you a little background, on June the 19th, the city council voted unanimously to send $1.5 million back to the state that was appropriated by the legislature. And the money was to be used to build a road on the Pickett property. Well, at last night's city council meeting, Clayton Atkinson asked the council to sign a resolution to send to the state, explaining why they were declining this money. Two weeks ago, at the BCC meeting in So Wall, you, Ms. Jones, turned this property over to Mr. Chapman.
I didn't deed the property to him. I mean, I asked him to pursue, looking into it.
The issue?
Yes, I did.
Okay, well, it's in your district, and, you know, it would help if they had accurate information. Clayton Atkinson told the city council last night that this property is in Chapman's district. That needs to be cleared up. That's not correct. This property is in your district.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that.
Okay, well, that needs to be cleared up, and the council needs, there's been so much controversy surrounding this property. It's been sold to the city once before, and the seller actually reneged on the deal. She got the property back because she sued the city. The bottom line is, the city was not interested in building this road, okay? And that's what the resolution was about last night. To add insult to injury, Bob Campbell has not been very forthcoming, nor has he been honest with the council about the intentions for this property, because the person who owns it happens to be a personal friend of his. So the council's now under the impression that y'all want the 1.5, that they want to send back to the state. Mr. Chapman, this is not in your district. It's surrounded in controversy. The council has voted no.
Is that, is that all, are you finished?
Yeah.
Thank you, you may sit down.
And I'll make a comment.
Yes.
With this money, you can go sit down, Ms. Marsh. I'm making this to everybody out there, including you. This project...
You may sit down, he said.
Oh, thank you.
You have permission to sit down.
Anyway, this project here was something that, you're right, the county had very little involvement in initially, if any. This was a priority number four, I think on the city's list for state funding. For whatever reason that I can't speak to, those would be entered by the legislative body in Tallahassee, as to why it was not funded at the top of the list. The one they wanted at the top of the list was obviously the water sewer and the gas line down 331.
That's a priority, yes.
That was their priority. For whatever reason, I can't speak as to why not, they did not get that funded, but they did get the number four, which was this connector between 288 and 331. Yes, it's across the Pickett property. I'm not wanting to get into any type of confrontation with anybody with the city council or anybody else. That's not why I was asked by this board to take it upon...
Excuse me, you're not, he's not asking you questions, he's talking. So do not interrupt him again.
All right, but anyway, I can't speak, well, I've lost my train of thought. What was I talking about?
While you're thinking, Commissioner Chapman is on our transportation, our TPO, so this works hand in hand with his ability to, you know, do roads and bridges. So he graciously offered to take the lead in this, so it's not, I certainly didn't deed the property, don't have the right to deed it, I didn't give him the property, I gave him the right to. The commission gave him the right to pursue.
Okay, and you're right, I'm on the TPO, so I have some input with the TPO, Colusa Walton TPO, as far as projects that are approved or put on a long-range list, whatever the case may be. In this particular case, all I'm trying to do is get the facts to present to this board as to whether or not we want to even ask to get the 1.5 million to construct that road or begin the construction on that road. Now, you indicated it was state-funded, it was not state-funded. There was no additional, it was not a legislative appropriation. What it was, it was, they advised DOT District Office to find somewhere within your projects that they have going now, 1.5 million, and put it in a separate account to fund that 1.5. There was no new appropriations from the state. So I've already met with DOT Representative Drake. I have an upcoming meeting with Representative Drake, Senator Gaynor, and DOT, and I'm supposed to meet tomorrow afternoon with the new owners of the Pickett property. My understanding, there's been a contract signed by the parties for the sale and the purchase of that property. And then based upon that meeting, and the other meetings with the Florida Legislative Delegation, then I can report back to this board and to the public as to what I find to determine or not if we want to engage and build that road through there. That's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carpenter, any other public comments anymore before we move on? I've seen none, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. The first item is item number 55 on your agenda. We have a request to appoint two members to the Code Enforcement Board to fill two vacancies. We presently have a position vacancy for a general contractor and one alternate vacancy. Recommended for the general contractor position is John Harrison, and recommended for the alternate position would be Mr. Charles Schneider. Both of those have submitted qualified volunteer applications.
What about Mr. Robert, John Robert?
I did some further research after we spoke yesterday. I did some further research after we spoke yesterday. Mr. Roberts serves as an alternate presently. We don't have a regular position to move him into. The only regular position is the general contractor position that's presently open. So, we'd request that he remain as an alternate as he was previously appointed.
What about Snyder? What do you want to do?
We want him as an alternate also. The code requires seven members plus two alternates. At present, we have seven members. Mr. Roberts has been filling in while we had a vacancy on the board, but he would remain as an alternate because he's not qualified to fill the one vacant position that we have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you Commissioners. Next item is number 56. We have a request to approve the county's responses to the planning and development services finding recommendations made as a result of the limited review of the planning and development fee audit. And Melissa is here for some comments.
And what we're requesting today, we're requesting that the board accept the Clerk's Office Limited Review Report of Planning and Development Fees and approve the county's management response letter to the recommendations. Looking at this, what we saw in this was not really new. We do want to note that the audit period that was being reviewed was January 2005 through December of 2014, and a part of that period was, looked like a re-audit of the Clerk's Office revenue audit performed in 2011. So, at this point, we're almost three years beyond the audit period and we're almost six months past the Auditor General's audit report. And what we've seen is solutions to items that were noted in the Clerk's review will go hand in hand with the work that we're doing on the Auditor General's comments, such as the matrix engagement. So, when those address the Auditor General's issues, it should go hand in hand and address the Clerk's Office issues. And staff is continuing to work on improving their processes and, and overall, just make improvements throughout the, the plan, how everything is working and planning.
Need a motion?
Yes, we need one.
Request, second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Madam Chairman, we have actually, the remaining agenda, we have a request to continue on four of those items. If you would like, we could go ahead and dispense with those in the event someone might be here to, to hear one of those items. Number 57, this actually had action at the July 11 BCC meeting. It was previously advertised for this meeting, so that's why it remains on the agenda, but you've already taken action on this particular item to continue that to August 8th on or after 5:00 p.m. at the South Walton Annex so that this item could be heard in South County. You've also already taken action on item number 58, the crossings phase three large-scale amendment. On July 11th, you approved this item to be continued to August 8, 2017, on or after 5:00 p.m. at the South Walton Annex, so it could be heard in South County.
Let me stop you just a second. I'm hearing from constituents that, that the neighborhood was promised a meeting, another meeting with this, with these people. So, could you make sure that happens?
Yes, ma'am. I'll follow up on that.
All right, thank you.
And of our remaining agenda, on item 62, actually on August 11, or July 11th, you took action to continue this item to August 8th also.
May I ask you a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
All of this is on our website, so people are aware that these have been moved to August 8th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought.
And I have corresponded with a number of people that were a bit confused about that. We apologize for that confusion, but in an effort to try to balance our very large agendas, we had some of these scheduled for up here, and when they got continued at the planning commission, that, that put us off schedule, but this will help us get back on schedule. We're going to do our best to hear South Walton projects in South County as best we can.
I knew you had. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And we have one other item, number 64, the downtown Seagrove final order amendment. This one is not completely ripe yet. We will have a proposed modification of the 2006 development order available on August 8th, so we can hear that item at South County also. We've given the downtown Seagrove a conditional approval, subject to landscaping and one other item, so that project can get its final approval, subject to the BCC agreeing to, or considering the amendment to the final order.
So, do we need a motion on this one?
Yes, ma'am. If we could have a motion to continue this item, number 64, to August 8th on or after 5:00 p.m. at the South Walton Annex.
I think to be clear, I would like to have a motion to continue item number 56, 57, 62, and 64.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
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 And that brings us back to item number 59, the Yellow House LLC, small-scale amendment. This is a request to approve by ordinance. This site is requesting to go from residential preservation to neighborhood commercial. This particular proposal is being sponsored by Walton County as a result of a settlement agreement regarding a land use lawsuit. The location is at the southeast corner of the intersection of County Road 83 and County Road 30A, presently the location of the Creamery Ice Cream Shop. We'd like to request that our staff report be entered into evidence.
Yes.
And Mr. Theriak is here to make a presentation on behalf of this particular project.
Come up. Thank you. Good to see you again.
Good morning. David Theriak with the law firm Theriak in Spain. I represent the property owner on this small-scale plan amendment application.
Mr. Theriak, before you get started, I'd like to ask our attorney, this is not a quasi-judicial item?
That's correct. It's legislative.
So, is there a time limit on Mr. Theriak?
I, I think in all fairness, we should allow Mr. Theriak to give his presentation, but for any of the public comment, I would, you guys can consider limiting them to three minutes apiece.
Thank you.
Not be long, Commissioner.
I plan on you not to be.
Just a housekeeping issue. I believe you all received a binder. I just need to introduce that into evidence. The first item is the staff report. The second item is a picture of the Blue Mountain Beach Creamery. The third item is an online petition, which has been signed by approximately 770 supporters. The fourth item is a petition to save our Blue Mountain Beach Creamery with approximately 400 signatures. And then, tab five were letters of support signed by 96 people. So, I'd like to make sure that that's introduced into the record.
Yes, William.
Thank you.
We'll introduce it.
There's not much that I can add to the staff report. We are asking for a small-scale plan amendment to change the property to neighborhood commercial. As you all know, there is a fantastic ice cream shop at that intersection. The other three corners at that intersection are VMU. The ability to use this property as a single-family house has long left the building. It's one of your busiest intersections, and I just simply don't see somebody wanting to live in that house as a single-family home when you have VMU on three corners. My client is not asking to change her business. What she does need is she's currently non-conforming, and if a hurricane comes through this season and destroys her building, she loses the ability to continue her longstanding family business. So, by changing the designation to neighborhood commercial, you're allowing her to no longer have non-conforming status and no longer being able to obtain the appropriate business insurance and ensuring that her family business continues. And I also just want to point out one other item, is I saw some of the correspondence that came in about code violations over the year. Because they're non-conforming, there's been a lot of misunderstanding about the structure. The nonconformity is the use. So, they've been cited for things such as putting an awning. There was a citation that that was an expansion of a non-conforming use. Wayne Dives wrote a letter saying it wasn't an expansion. They were cited for putting a bench on their deck. Wayne Dives determined, based upon administrative appeal, that it was not a code violation to put a bench on their porch. They've been cited because they put a picnic table in their front yard. There have been two code enforcement proceedings that actually went to hearing. They won both of those. That type of issue goes away if we're no longer dealing with a nonconformity status. So, we would ask you to approve the small-scale plan amendment. And also to save time, there are a whole bunch of people here that are ready to speak. I'm just going to ask them to stand for a second. If you support the ice cream shop, please stand. Thank you. I am through unless you have any questions for me. And, yes, sir.
Mr. Theriak, right now, there is a, the ice cream shop, obviously.
Yes.
Is there any other type of business within that structure?
Let me double-check. Christine, is there any other business in there other than your ice cream shop?
Donuts.
She sells donuts.
Donuts. Is the bicycle business still in there or used?
No.
No. Is there any residential dwelling upstairs?
No.
Is there any plan to use it as a dwelling? Is there any plan to increase the present businesses that are presently in that building?
Not at this time, sir.
The building, and looking at the photograph, Dave, I don't know if you can see it or not, where he's at right now, just to the east of the big two-story, there's a structure there. Is this part of this change here?
That would be part of the same property. Yes, sir.
And what is that used for, that?
Let me ask. Christine?
I believe it's a real estate office.
Real estate office. It's been there for quite some time.
So, that's non-conforming too? The whole parcel is non-conforming?
The whole parcel is non-conforming. If you all approve the small-scale amendment, the whole property becomes neighborhood commercial, removes the non-conforming status.
And Commissioner Chapman, I guess to address some of the questions you had, if they wanted to expand the business in any manner, if the small-scale amendment was granted, at that point, they could come in and apply for a development order. So, any expansion after the small-scale amendment is granted would require a development order approval.
Seems like the land is pretty much used up.
It is. It's only .24 of an acre. The ability to do much more is constrained by the size and the county's land development regulations for that property.
Okay. At the present time, what is being used there now, the parking, it meets the parking requirement.
Yes.
So, if there was any expansion of that area, it would throw you out of compliance because there probably isn't any parking available except maybe across the street.
If they were to expand, and you all have done the neighborhood commercial designation, they would have to come back through, get a development order, demonstrate compliance with parking for any kind of expansion.
Okay. That's all right.
Any other questions? Okay. Questions, comments from the audience? Do you would like to come up? Yes, sir. And state your name and spell your last name, please.
Do we have to have a motion? No, not for this.
Hi Commissioners, I'm Kyle McQueen, last name McQueen, M-C-Q-U-E-E-N. I'm a resident, 401 Blue Mountain Road. I love the neighborhood. I've been in Blue Mountain for seven years now. We are a unique community and we're pretty proud of it, our uniqueness and our quaintness. We know development, commercial development, and some of these things are imminent, but some of the things that's pretty nice is that we have this amazing family element of this ice cream shop and to go there some evening and see 15 and 20 people, grandparents, multi-generations walking in the ice cream shop. It's kind of good. It's kind of better than trying to figure out where we're going to park the portable police department trailer for processing MIPs. So, it's, it's a pretty awesome thing to have in our neighborhood. I think it's a huge benefit just in forcing the, or I'd say supporting the family element of our, of our neighborhood. And I just think it's something, we've got this paperwork and things to take care of for them, but it's just a good thing for our neighborhood, even though, you know, we'll get a little few parking issues and all that kind of stuff, but you know, it's kind of a good problem. We believe it's going to keep the family element of the Blue Mountain area and maybe keep some of the other trouble out in the long term, just, just be good for everybody. If you know, we can't pick and choose every business that's here. That's, that's not any of ours rules, but if we can help these guys, it'd probably be a good thing for us, certainly our local community. And if anybody doesn't know, if you give directions, live in Blue Mountain Beach, it's already a bit of a landmark. Where are you, where's Blue Mountain? Where's that? Wherever the ice cream shop is. And so, we know, and so it's, it's, we're pretty proud to have them and I think it's a great family and they just deserve all the support that we can give them within reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Kalen Rhodes, R-H-O-D-E-S. I've been, I'm only 18, but I've been a Walton County resident my whole life, and until recently, I was a Blue Mountain Beach resident. I've been employed by Blue Mountain Beach Creamery for three years, and it's been the best job I've ever had. I am so happy to go into work every day and scoop ice cream for these people that are just as happy to receive ice cream. And the support is, it's unreal. When we started a letter campaign and a little sign-up to, you know, show that you support the Creamery, people were shocked that anything could, even with the prospect that anything could happen to the ice cream shop, and nobody wants it to go away. Residents in North Walton County are big fans. I know, I have talked to tons of people from South Walton County that are big fans, and then obviously, all of the tourists that come down love to receive our ice cream also. I actually, I have personal relationships with people who shop at, you know, to get ice cream and donuts. Other day, I ran into a man at Tom Thumb and, you know, he gave me a hug, and it's all because he's a customer, because we form relationships and we sell ice cream and we do great things for the community of Blue Mountain Beach. I'm going to be attending the University of Florida in just three weeks, and I, go Gators. I plan to pursue a degree in business to actually come back and assist in running and managing the Creamery, so your support would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none.
Commissioners, just to give you some comfort about this particular land use and some comfort for our public in the neighborhood, neighborhood commercial is a much less intense version of commercial than the village mixed use that appears on the other three corners. The neighborhood commercial prohibits bars, convenience stores, and gas stations. So, those kinds of things would not be allowed to be placed on this side if, if the Creamery ever went away. But we do support this land use change. It will give us the opportunity to regulate this as needed, and we think it will solve a problem for the county. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve this. This, this place is, is a landmark, as it was spoken, and I think we'd have a full-scale ride on our hands if we didn't approve this. This place, you go by there, I, I drive by it every afternoon on the way home from work, and in the hot sun, there'll be 50 to 100 people wrapped around that building trying to get ice cream. And it's, it's not just tourists because I see some of my friends there. The ice cream is unbelievable. The service is unbelievable, and these people have worked extremely hard to build this business up, and I think it would be a tragedy if it went away. Right now, they can't get insurance because they're not in compliance. I feel like this is a family-owned business that South Walton, especially 30A, wants. We want family-owned businesses on 30A. We don't want chains on 30A. I've said that since I moved to South Walton five years ago. And by the way, it was the best move I ever made in my life because of businesses like the Blue Mountain Creamery. All we have down there right now are mom and pop operations, and this is one of our biggest, and I think we need to approve this and get this out of this way so this can be a problem they don't have anymore. And I make a motion, we accept this.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Did you vote? Did you vote?
No, not yet.
You have to...
I know. You know, I'm, I really am torn here because I've gotten a number... You know, I really am torn here because I've gotten a number of messages from people that say how it disrupts their life in that Blue Mountain community. But after hearing y'all and hearing these people, my vote will be yes.
Good.
Okay. I'm not uncomfortable with it, but my vote is yes.
Christine, congratulations.
Would anyone who anticipates speaking before the board stand and raise your right Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth?
Thank you.
Okay. Whenever you come forward, if you would, just state and spell your last name and state that you've been sworn in. Thank you. Have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of the quasi-judicial items?
Already turned them in. Did we give them a minute to exit? Looks like, you know...
I guess while they're exiting, would any of those ex parte communications influence your decision in any way?
No.
So seeing no, whenever everyone clears out, we can proceed.
Let's move number 38.
Okay. Let's move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This will bring us to item number 60 on our agenda, the 38 Town Homes Platte. This is a request to approve by final milar. This development was previously approved on April 26, or 22, 2016, under Development Order 15-001-00152. The platte's the final stage of this request. It's a request to platte 26 townhomes, a commercial lot, and a pool amenity on 2.4 acres with a future land use of village-mixed use. You may recall this as the replacement project for the Hampton Inn. It's on the north side of County Road 30A. They have met the requirements for plating, and we have a recreation fee that will be The applicant is here if you have any questions for them.
Ms. Chapman, Ms. Chapman.
And we request the staff report be moved into evidence.
Or platte the money, that's not fair. Any other comments, questions that are appropriate?
Do you accept the staff report?
I accept this staff report.
Thank you.
Okay. The applicant? State your name and spell your last name, please, sir.
Alan Tucker, T-U-C-K-E-R, with Guston Confident Tucker.
And you were sworn in, right?
Ma'am?
You were sworn in earlier? Were you sworn in earlier? Did you?
No.
Okay.
Just then.
Yes.
Not really. I couldn't hear. I have hearing aids.
Okay, just real quick.
The air conditioner's just killing me.
That's fine. Just raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Do we have questions for the applicant?
My standard question is always deal with stormwater. I'd like to know what provisions you've taken to address your stormwater from your site. Yeah, I think you've got an engineer here.
I am not an engineer. I've been in this business for 35 years, and I'm pretty sure all the stormwater in this project has been vetted through the proper channels with the Water Management District and county engineers.
And Commissioner Chapman, I guess, so at the plating phase, the stormwater, I guess, would have been reviewed at the time of the development order. Isn't that right, Mac?
My bad.
Oh, it's okay.
But for your information, Commissioner, it's a combination of dry retention ponds and some exfiltration.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Seeing none, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? It's passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item number 61. This is prominence, the hub phase three. This is a replat of Lot 18, request to approve by final milar. This was previously approved by Development Order, and the reason for the replat is the increase, the intensity, from 3,203 square feet to 6,400 square feet on this lot with the traditional neighborhood development, future land use category. That increase in intensity results in an increased amount for proportionate fair share, and the new total for proportionate fair share for this development is $89,472.21. And that is due to be paid with the final building permit for this particular lot. We request that the staff report be moved into evidence.
Yes, we do.
And the applicant is here if you have any questions from the applicant.
Do we have questions for the applicant? Do you have questions?
No.
Nope, none. Okay. Then, any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to the last item on our agenda for this section, item number 63, the Gulf Atlantic Electric Warehouse. This is a request to approve by final order, 14,200 square feet of office warehouse. It's located in the South Walton Commerce Park, towards the end of Saranova Road, which is on the north side of US 98, immediately east of our new sports park in the Peach Creek area. This one uses a combination of dry retention, surface ponds on site for stormwater. The applicant is here if you have any questions for the applicant. We would like to also request the staff report be moved into evidence.
Yes, we move it into evidence. Any questions, comments for the applicant?
I don't think so.
You can come on up just while they're looking.
No, I don't.
Good morning. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates. I'm the engineer of record, and I have been sworn. I think Mac did a fine job of introducing the project. It is a commercial project in a commercially designated PUD. I think it's appropriately cited and designed in accordance with the Land Development Code and Comp Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions of approval. Motion second. Okay. Do we have any comments, any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to, second.
Motion second.
We have our executive session.
So we just undo, we take back the motion and the second. And let the audience clear. Thank you for coming.